Good evening, everyone. Make sure we have chairs for everyone. I hope we get started this evening. So it is now 7:00 PM. On Monday, March 20th, 2022, I hereby call this meeting of the Board of Education of the Nordonia Hills City School District to order. This is a typical meeting of the Nordonia Hills City School Board of Education. It is a meeting in public, but it's not a public meeting. The public is invited to watch the proceedings of the board. There will be an opportunity for public participation in the open forum section of the meeting a little bit later. Please be sure to sign in and include your phone number in the event that we need to contact you if you are going to be presenting. If you are uncomfortable with open forum, always know that your comments and questions may always be submitted to the board and administration through emails and phone calls. Mr. Brown, would you please take the role?
Mr. Kearney?
Here.
Mr. Larmour?
Here.
Mr. McKinley?
Here.
Mr. Diddmore?
Here.
Ms. Vodich?
Here.
All board members present.
If we could stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion, please, for the approval of tonight's agenda? A motion. A second?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Diddmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Ms. Kerry?
Well, tonight's an exciting night for us. It was just over a year ago that the previous board sat in this room on a very, very snowy day and decided that they would hire Soul Harris Day as the architect who would do the pre-bond work. I see Mrs. Strong is here. She was a big proponent of the Soul Harris Day movement. I know that she would be incredibly proud of the work that they've done if you are still here on the board, Cammy. And so what they did is they started what was the beginning of a steering committee process. And Scott Leopold's going to tell you all about it. But what it's going to entail is hours and hours of 30-plus community members coming together time and time again and putting together a master plan to recommend. I see a lot of our steering committee members here in the room. So I think before I turn it over to Scott, I'd just like to recognize, if you were on the steering committee, could you please stand and be thanked for all of your hard work? Thank you so much. The steering committee was a great cross-section of our community. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Leopold of Cooperative Strategies and Don Ferrante from Soul Harris Day is here. And Scott's going to take you through what the process was and what the steering committee is giving the board as its recommendation for what we do with our facilities going forward. Thanks, Scott.
Great, thank you. Again, I'm Scott Leopold of Cooperative Strategies. Here's our agenda for the evening. We'll just talk briefly about the process and the timeline, talk about some background data. We'll kind of, at a high level, go through our community meetings, what those results were. We had our futures conference at the very beginning. Then we had an educational framework session in the middle. And then we had options at the end. And we'll talk about final recommendations. And we'll wrap it up with a Q and A. So this is the overall process that we followed. It's, you know, kind of intended as a six-month process. We started at the beginning of the school year. And so this is where we are with the engagement piece. It kind of built game steam as we left through. We had the educational futures conference at the beginning. We used that to kind of help recruit for the steering committee. We got a great steering committee throughout the process. We then dug into that background data, that assessment information about the schools. Then we came back in the middle and talked about the educational framework. And so we talked about things like what grade configurations we want, how large do our schools, how large we want our schools to be, how many schools do we want? And then we gathered the nitty-gritty and we kind of used that as an envelope to develop the options that we then could share with the community a couple of months ago. And so now we've had a chance to kind of comb for all that output from the community. The committee has come to some recommendations that we'll be sharing tonight. Here's our overall timeline. That futures conference is in September. We talked about that educational framework November 10. And then the community meeting where we talked about options was on February 2. We had a lot of online feedback throughout this process that was great. And so, you know, some people thought that maybe our turnout of those community meetings wasn't so great. I was pleased with it. We had a disproportionate amount of online responses to the number of people that kind of came to this meeting. So it was great. Here's all our entire steering committee meeting schedule. I'm not going to go through them, but you can just see the amount of time that the steering committee members kind of put forth into this. Again, a great group to work with. So just going through the background data, Portrait of a Night, we have seen this graphic in every single room we've been in when we've had a meeting. This is kind of our north star for the process. If we got stuck or mired in something, we came back to that original Portrait of a Night because that was the reason that we're doing all this. And this is something that the board kind of put together and approved. So just as a refresher, so facilities master plan, what is it? We want to make sure that our facility is aligned to the Portrait of a Night and support it, that we're aligning with our educational framework. We're considering our facility condition and our educational adequacy. And we're looking at our enrollment and our capacity. And then we're also looking at those costs. And those are something that we've been having to hit real hard and look at throughout this process because of all the recent volatility. So here's our historical enrollment. And so this just shows what our overall enrollment was in 2010. So we've declined slightly over the last 11 or 12 years to around 3,500. This is our projected enrollment that we've been using for this process. This was done, you know, this was done by Future Think, which is produced by the state. And this is a pre-COVID projection. And so the data that we've been using for this process was based on a projection that was done before the pandemic. And so we've gotten pretty close to kind of bouncing back where we were. And it shows a pretty flat trend moving forward. And so we've been working at that as we've developed our square footages and stuff for options and recommendations. Maybe there we go. So this is a map that we've been using throughout the process. This shows the location. Oh, there we go. This shows the location of all of our facilities. So Lee Eaton in the north, Rushwood over to the east. And then, of course, Northfield here. We've got Ledge View. Sorry, Rushwood's to the west, my other east. And then Ledge View. And then, of course, the high school. You know, the middle school's in the middle, too. What we also have on this map, this shows our student density. And so you can see where the concentrations of students are in the district relative to our facilities. And so that's something that we've kind of used to make some of the decisions that we've had in our recommendations as well. We've also looked at our sites. And so this is always a fun slide for me to put together. This shows all of our existing sites to the same scale. And so you can kind of get an idea of how large each of the sites are relative to each other. And so Northfield and, you know, Nordonia Middle School through the smaller sites. Rushwood, larger site, had a lot of terrain and woods there at Rushwood. Lee Eaton, Ledge View. And of course, the high school site and transportation. And we'll be talking a lot about that tonight because this doesn't include some additional parcels that we have now. Now I'll go over some of our community meetings and those findings. So again, our educational futures conference, this is the first one that we had. This is back in September. We had about 75 attendees. We had an online questionnaire filed in that meeting. We had about 20 responses to that. We asked people, you know, four questions to ponder in this process. And this meeting was really intended to just get people excited about education and think about what it means to the future and the opportunities that it presents. So what qualities should the students of 2050 have? What are the careers of 2050? What does the school of 2050 look like? And how do our facilities support or hinder the Portrait of a Night? So again, our feedback from these meetings, people really came to the, you know, what I would call the right answer, flexibility. The one thing that we can guarantee is that there's going to be change. And so having facilities that are going to be flexible going into the future is key. And, you know, there was also a lot of feedback around the ideas of, you know, career tech, medical trades, those kinds of things. Our educational framework, again, this is the meeting that we held on November 10 at Lee Eaton. We had about 17 noncommittee members attend. This was lower than, you know, we want for people to come in person. We had six different groups that filled out that survey. But we had 815 online surveys to that. We had 20 at the first meeting. And so we've started the game steam at this meeting. Kind of the big takeaway from that, doing nothing was not an option. There is support for reducing the number of facilities and there's support for having three total facilities. Today, we only have six. Every time I load a big image, it takes a minute. This was a graphic that we used in the educational framework meeting. And what we wanted to do was kind of just put together, what are the other districts around us doing? What are their grade configurations? And so this shows Nordonia in the middle. And we show kind of all our neighboring districts, how many facilities they have, what their grade configurations are, what their enrollment is, and, you know, what their total number of students per grade they have. And this was helpful for a lot of people to kind of see, quantify what was going on in Nordonia versus some of the other surrounding districts. So again, one of the questions that we had on this was how many sites should we have by grade level? And this was kind of the output to that. There was, again, there was support for one elementary site. There was support for three. But it was really all over the place. But there, you know, there was a lot of support for one and two elementary facilities. When we look at secondary sites, there was some support for two, some support for one. Total sites, now, when I say secondary, I mean middle and high school. And so there was support for having, you know, a middle school and a high school in here. And if you look at our total number of sites here, you can see pretty good spread, but we did have a significant amount of support for three and four buildings. So when we came to options, this was our second community meeting. You know, again, we started off and talked about the renovations. And so throughout this process, we've been talking a lot about the physical condition of our facilities and what those costs would be. And this is based on an updated assessment from 2018. And if you look at the total cost to renovate all of our facilities, we're in the neighborhood of $118 million. And this is, one thing I do want to point out is that this is not an apples-to-apples comparison with the cost sets that we used for the options. So we're using for new construction, we're using somewhere in the neighborhood of $325 a foot. These are not escalated for that. And so my guess is, is that if those are escalated to the same conditions that that $325 is, that $118 million is probably closer to $135. And so just considering this renovation, you know, these renovation costs were at a point as a district where we kind of have a clean slate. We can just apply starting new everywhere. We don't have any one of these buildings that is below that two-thirds rule. And that's the 66% FCI, which is if the cost to renovate a school is greater than 66% of the cost to replace it, often you're better off replacing the facility because at the end of the, at the end of it, you have a new facility versus an old facility that's been renovated. I kind of use the car analogy. You know, if you've got an older vehicle, you can put new tires on it. You can, you know, put new body panels on it. But you've still got that original frame. It's the original vehicle there, the same VIN number. And so again, we're at that point where it does make sense to kind of start over. One thing I just want to start with, this is our kind of updated high school site map. And so this includes those additional parcels that we have. And this is something that we shared with the committee that last meeting. We did talk a little bit about debt capacity. The district currently has a debt capacity of $150 to $165 million. Matt, chime in if anything's changed. We talked a little bit about mileage. The mileage rate for a bond of $150 million would be 6.43. For $165, it would be 7.07. We've got to just keep an eye on that construction market. Due to supply chain and other factors, we're seeing costs coming in 15% higher than they would have last year when our typical escalation year to year is somewhere between 3% and 5%. The construction costs that we use for new construction are $325 a foot plus an additional $10 per square foot for debt. And so, you know, as you see these recommendations, there's going to be excess facilities at the end. What the fate of that, of those facilities are is another dedicated process. But we do have dollars allocated here for demolition and basically planting grass and book sites. And so just because we're allocating the dollars for it doesn't mean that anything's been decided. We just want to make sure that we have the cost covered. So here's our original four options. And I'm just going to kind of go through these briefly. Option one was a four-facility option. It was having a K3, a 4.6, a 7.8, and a 9.12 up the other way. And then option two was another four-facility option, but this was having two K4s, one 5.8 and a 9.12. Option three was one K4, one 5.8, one 9.12. And option four was a K3, a 4.6, and a 7.12. And so those were the original options that we presented to the community back in February. As we went, so I'm going to kind of take you through the same exercise we took the committee through to look at these results. Again, status quo is not an option. We talked about this lovely little smiley face scale where we kind of judged the sentiment from people's comments and what they felt about each site. So Ledge View, people were somewhat indifferent. Northfield, people didn't think it was a good site for the future. Rushwood, they did. Lee Eaton, they did. The middle school, again, kind of that middle of the road. And I think a lot of the sentiment around the high school is it's the site that we have. Some other prevalent comments that we had, you know, the high school is where it is. This, believe it or not, we saw this quite a bit. The district should have enough money that they should be able to lower taxes, especially with the MGM money that's coming in. And so that was something that was prevalent in those comments. They thought that that was going to be the cure to many facility issues. So individual results versus group results. We did have, at the meeting that we had on February 2, we asked people to kind of work in small groups to try to come to consensus. And, you know, we had them. We gave them the presentation. They talked about it. And in that meeting, kind of the consensus of the group was they liked the idea of option four, which was the 7.12. When we got the vast amount of feedback, I think we had over 1,000 responses online, option four was not favored. People really liked option three. They didn't like the concept of having the seventh graders in the same building when the 12th grader. And even though we kind of took them through the exercise of we can make the building feel like two buildings from a structural standpoint and function like one building programmatically if we have kids in low grades with one access to that advanced programming, there were still, you know, it's still not very much positive sentiment for that 7.12 option. We have 1,000 views of the survey, but about 486 hits on the YouTube video. So we have a 30-minute presentation embedded in the survey. And we got about a 50% watch rate on that. The other thing that I put on here is, you know, we did have, the steering committee was a majority of the people that came to that meeting. But when we looked at those responses individually, the steering committee didn't pull people towards option four. So here's all of our individual responses. And so I don't expect you to be able to read all of these on this chart, but obviously, option one is first, option two, option three, and option four. And so this is, when we look at just the steering committee only that attended the meeting, this was all responses at the meeting. And then this is all in-person responses. So this is the meeting. This is all online. And so you can kind of see, looking at this, the blue, the gray, and the red ask people, you know, level of support. And then the green bars are what is your preferred option. And so you can see, we look at the overall all responses, option three, which was the K4, 5.8, 9.12, was kind of the favorite. And so again, here's the group results for those that came to the meeting. And that's what I was talking about, how we had that. Those groups liked option four. And those are just the people that came to the meeting once they started talking about it. But again, the overall sentiment from everybody who filled it out online was option three. So here you can see, this is out of the chart zoomed in. It's option three again. We also did ask some questions about prioritization of projects, you know, because we know some of these projects are expensive. So given the reality, the investment costs and affordability, how would you prioritize buildings by grade level? So the lighter, the green color, that is going to be for high school first. And then number two is middle school second. And then elementary is third. And so kind of as I read that, that's how I look at that. And here's the individual responses, pretty much in line with that. We also asked some questions. If it becomes necessary to reduce costs, should renovations and potential additions be considered at any of the facilities? So should we try to preserve any of our existing footprints if we can? So this is how it looks at my building. These are those group responses. And so blue is yes, red is no. So Ledge View, no. Lee Eaton, 40/60. Northfield, pretty much no. Rushwood, 60%, yes. Middle school, 20%, yes. High school, 40%, yes. Same data for everybody, all 1,000 responses. I think what's interesting about this is these are the people that came to the meetings that are more connected to the district. And this is those 1,000 responses that may have less connection with the district, that may have more tolerance for renovating versus replacing. Other question we asked, would you be willing to support a bond issue between $150 to $165 million to approve facilities? And so this is, again, those group responses. So the darker the blue, the more positive. The gray is neutral and the red is negative. So here's the 150, here's the 165. Again, these are the people that attended the meeting. We look at the overall response. We're starting to get some more negatives in here than we did for those people that came to the meeting. And so again, just remember that this is kind of, this is the more representative group that filled this out. But overall, we're at majority support for both of them. But whenever I show this kind of data to boards, I ask people to take it with a grain of salt because these are the people that are connected to the district enough that they're, have access to take this survey, that they know it's happening. And we've got, oh shoot, what is it, Joe? We say 75% of the households in the district don't have any kids in the system?
Yeah, closer to 80%.
Yeah. And so we've got some work to do on a communication standpoint, from a communication standpoint, moving forward. So one of the questions that we had on here was really interesting. And everybody's like, well, how are you going to get people to articulate how to configure the district? And so we did it. So what we were able to do is we analyzed everybody's responses. We asked them, you know, again, what's your level of support for each of the scenarios? What's your preferred scenario? And how would you configure the district? And this was just an open-ended text question. And, you know, the answer was, you know, we want them to answer something like, oh, I liked option. I would like option three. K, you know, K4 at Lee Eaton, the middle school, the middle school site, and the high school. And so we were able to kind of go through this and see what the favorites were for each site. And so this was option one, which was the, again, the K3, 4.6, 7.8, 9.12. They liked Rushwood is the K3 site. Lee Eaton is the 4.6 site. The middle school is the middle school site. And of course, the high school where it is. So this is how we were able to kind of drill down and see what those look like. So option two, this was two K4s, the 5.8 and the 9.12. So the favorites were K4 at Ledge View, K4 at Rushwood, 5.8 at the middle school, and 9.12 at the high school. So you can kind of see how that all picks out. Option three, so this was K4, 5.8, 9.12. So K4 at Rushwood, 5.8 at the middle school, and 9.12 at the high school. But you can see, looking at this, how it kind of spreads out. So Rushwood was the favorite for the K4. Lee Eaton, not far behind. And here's option four. So this was the K3, 4.6, 7.12. So Rushwood, Lee Eaton, and the high school. K3 at Rushwood, 4.6 at the middle school. I'm sorry, typed it up here. And then the high school. Okay, so other thing that, you know, we talked about is opportunities to educate, opportunities to educate the community. How much things cost? I think people had sticker shock with how expensive a lot of this is. The difference is in capital operating funds. That's something that every, every district struggles to communicate with their community. Where the MGM money is going? What our, what our basically ceiling is? What can we do without increasing the tax rate? And the condition of our schools? I don't think people understand what the condition of our schools are compared to some of the districts around us as well. So recommendations, and we've updated these a little bit. We have taken a deeper look at the middle school or the 5.8 square footage. And so that's reduced a little bit. And that's gotten our costs down. I think we're in the one hundred and sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-three million range. Now we're one hundred and fifty-eight million. So new K four at Rushwood, new five-eight at Lee Eaton, and a new five-twelve at the high school. And we took the BOE offices out of there based on feedback from the community. So this is something that's new. One thing that I want to, I want to make, be very clear on, when we went to the community, we didn't know the status of additional land adjacent to the high school site. And so all that feedback that we got from the community was based on the idea that, you know, we could, we could basically rebuild the high school in pieces on its current footprint, and that was going to be about it. So here's an alternative recommendation based on that recent property acquisition. New high school somewhere on the newly acquired, you know, on the existing site with the acquired property, and the idea of the five-eight on the existing high school footprint. I think that this is something that we're going to have to work on because, you know, this, you know, this land is kind of new. We're going to have to turn Dominic and his team loose trying to see what fits where on the site and what works best for the next fifty years. But this is kind of where the, where the committee kind of landed. We had, here's, here's the recommendation, you know, given the current high school configuration, here's something that we talked about based on that new land acquisition at the high school. And so here's the, again, K four at Rushwood, five-eight at Lee Eaton, and then nine-twelve at the high school. Or this concept of having the five-eight and the nine-twelve at the high school. And I want to be very clear, these are two separate buildings. It's not one building that's connected. We have it as two separate buildings. And then we've got the K four at Lee Eaton, just because it's kind of more central and it's available in this scenario. So here's what the, the overall costs end up looking like. So the K four, we're at forty-two million. The five-eight, we're at forty-six point seven million. And the replacement nine-twelve, we're at sixty-seven point three million. So our total's one fifty-eight point five. We've got that, that ten-year operational savings at twenty-one million because we're operating three less buildings than we are today. And so that's, you know, that's the number that we've been using throughout this process. And, you know, that's again, based on operating those fewer schools, and that adds up quickly as we think about it. One other thing that we did talk about, just because I wanted to, I wanted to just have it out there and at least have the conversation with the committee, was so far, our, our construction costs are three-twenty-five a foot, and they're holding. What do we do if costs escalate beyond the debt ceiling? And so this was, this wasn't anything that we had a lot of conversation with. I just wanted to have this discussion with the committee so that we didn't have a gotcha moment in the future. But the idea of, you know, construct the high school on the newly acquired property if possible, minor renovations of the existing high school to make it suitable for grades five through eight. We do the new, the newly eaten project to get that operational savings. And then we come back and do the five-eight later when finances allow. And so this is a way to get the program moving in that neighborhood of a hundred million versus one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty. Again, we didn't have any consensus around it, but just something that we talked about with the committee. So one of our, our final exercises that we kind of took the committee through is a consensus building exercise. And so I like to use this example of pizza, so I'm going to get everybody hungry right now. So it's a consensus scale of one to four. If you're at a one, you want to have pizza, you don't care what kind of pizza it is. If you're at a two, you want pizza, but you don't want, you don't want pineapple. You don't think that belongs on pizza, but you definitely want pizza. If you're at a three, you don't want pizza, but you're okay with other people having pizza. And if you're at a four, you don't want pizza, and you don't want anybody else having pizza either. And so when we took the, the committee through this, that last meeting, I think we had, we had fourteen people that wanted everybody to have pizza, didn't care what kind. And then we had seven that didn't like pineapple. And then we had one on the committee that did not want pizza. It was a four that, that didn't, that didn't support the recommendation. But that's the, the overall consensus of the committee that came to last. So at this point, I'm happy to toss it back to you and answer any questions you have.
So as I talked about, the board clearly does not expect it or should vote on anything today. You should take what Scott took, and you should have discussions. And if the board decides that it wants to move forward with any kind of facility, then, you know, that will happen after a lot of discussions. But I would like for the board to have the opportunity to ask Scott any questions now if he had one.
So just out of curiosity, you mentioned that the twenty-one million that the annual cost saved. So if we're looking at that simultaneously, simultaneous regard for building, how does that hit the overall price? So if we were at a hundred million, how do we now look at it? Or is it more long-term, the little ten-year kind of spec? And what does that look like per year and say?
I, I would defer to Matt on that one. That's something that we'd have to kind of flesh out and see what percentage of that savings could be used on debt service.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that we have the two different pots of money. So the one would be the bond issuance. It has to be used strictly for the bond. And then we could realize the operational savings like Scott's mentioning, which would impact the general fund for the operations side of this work.
Okay. So it, it will help? I can't tell you exactly how much.
I think that would help the community because I think they probably had the same question as me.
I have a follow-up question for you. With regard to the proposals roughly at one hundred and fifty-eight million, is that factoring in the fifteen percent differential for inflation for next year? Or is it fifteen percent in addition to one hundred and fifty-eight million?
So it's, it's based on three-twenty-five a foot for construction costs. Dominic, do you have any, do you want to talk about any recent bids we've had?
So yeah, we kind of targeted the three-twenty-five. I recently had two elementaries go out to bid for North Canton City Schools. Those bids were coming in roughly just under three hundred a square foot. So we're trying to build in some of that inflation or future inflation as these schools could potentially, if it moves forward. Typically, the process is one year roughly to design, and then it's two years of construction. So if you look at it, if you put something on the ballot here in the future, you're probably looking at roughly two years of hopeful inflation in that three hundred and twenty-five that we're trying to build into it. So that was kind of like our analysis when we looked at what that cost per square foot should be.
And does that consider also the flip side of that? If next year there were lapses in material markets, how, how would you go about wrestling with that? And obviously, we would have a much larger pot left over, which I'm assuming we can't return back to residents. How, I mean, how do you, how do you wrestle with that?
We wait and see. I wish I had a crystal ball. I mean, as we've gone through this process, we've aimed high, wanted the cost to be higher so that we, we have the opportunity to, well, we don't need that much money now. And it, it just gives us flexibility later. We don't want to be low because no one likes, no one likes certain costs coming in over budget. So it's something that, that kind of, as we look at how this gets phased out, we'll have a better idea of what it looks like. We've, we've tried to aim high for, at this point in the process.
So last, well, last question for me. So when you look at the cost for renovation and the cost for new buildings, I, I was trying to follow along, so maybe a couple, a difference of maybe about fifteen, twenty million-ish?
Ish.
If we were to renovate everything we currently have, that has a problem to go on to one of the other.
And that's going to be like for like. It's not going to give you any reprogramming dollars to move walls or anything like that.
Gotcha.
It'll be a fully modern enough to code facility, but it's not going to be.
Does give us flexibility for.
Correct. Now, that's not saying that it can't be done. It would just add cost. And by the time you start looking at reprogramming dollars and additional spaces that aren't there, you're probably getting close to that one hundred and fifty, one hundred and sixty-five.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Just one last question.
Sure.
We, you talked about earlier that a lot of the participants so far have been families that have students in the district, and that you've mentioned having, we have a lot of work to do in terms of trying to reach out to people who don't so that we can raise awareness and get other opinions. Do you have a plan or a recommendation on how we can do that and start talking to the community a little bit more?
I think once down the road we get, you know, buy-in from the board, we'll start to kind of prepare documents that we have in this process in a way that are very easy for us to communicate. And that'll allow, you know, whatever bond committee or foundation to kind of take that information and go forth with it. So we want to make, I want to boil this, we like to do is boil this whole presentation down with placemat, just the process on one side, the recommendation on the other. So it's super simple to communicate how we got there, why we're doing it, and what exactly it is.
Yeah, I think one other important thing to communicate, and actually probably Matt can do this better than you, Scott, is this, is the whole idea that we do have some current bonds that are going to be expiring soon. So whatever it is, if the board put this on the ballot and it were to pass, that higher rate would be for a couple of years. Can you, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Brown.
No, that's okay. So to your point, Dr. Clark, we currently have two, two major bonds that are out there that are assessing levy, tax levies to pay those back. And the larger one, it's about two point four-nine mils currently. That's going to be expiring in December of twenty twenty-five. So that'll, those millage dollars will fall off of the tax bill in twenty twenty-five, after twenty twenty-five. And then the smaller levy is about point three-seven mils, and that's not going to expire till December twenty thirty. So we do have some flexibility in the near term here to drop some mileage off of the
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Dominic. The board's going to have a lot to consider because, you know, if ultimately, if the board decides that, you know, you're going to take the steering committee's recommendation and give the community a chance to vote on whether there'll be new facilities or not, I think like August, I think Matt gave the timeline to you. It's going to be, within a few months, you'll have to make a decision. But it should not be rushed. You need to have some delicate discussions about this. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. We have another presentation tonight. I'll score Mr. Business. And so Casey Wright is here. And Casey has been talking with me for years about this idea of class rank. Let me start this up, Casey, then you'll be live. And this will also be not something that you vote on tonight, but if the board is in agreement, it would be a slight policy change that we would ask you to vote on within the next couple of months to be active for the incoming freshmen. Casey, take it over.
Well, Dr. Clark, Mr. Brown, and the president members of the board, I'm here to talk to you something that maybe not as interesting, is building all the facilities will probably make more impact on kids' lives right away at least. On this class rank, class rank is something we're very familiar with. Class rank is what we had when we were, when we were kids growing up in school. It's class rank that I'm passionate talking about. Tammy, you send your letter, and they knows I've talked to her about this for probably ten years she's running the board. And so this I bring to you as board to talk about. Comes from this policy, six point one-four. That's where class rank is codified within your policy. It tells us how do we rank kids? We rank kids based on their GPAs while they're at the high school. Why is that a big deal now? Over the years, we've increased the number of AP courses and CCP courses at their early high school. What that does is, and we rank an AP course and CCP course on a five-point scale, where our courses on a four-point scale. And your honors courses get an extra point five jump in GPA. What we try to do is encourage our kids to take harder classes. That's exactly what that's doing. And then what do we do with class rank? We provide that on your transcript. So in the transcript, it tells you what that is in class rank. We're talking about how world and history have changed over the time I've been here and why it changes new. First of all, what do we use class rank for? Internally, we use it for top twenty-five graduation. Everybody's under our graduation, we start with our top twenty-five. And Dr. Clark's superintendent award is a top ten percent in class. And so that's why we're going to use that. Once you leave us, if your school does class rank, you put it on your college admission and your application, and they will use that as part of their admission statement for you. If you're applying to an arts college, they will also look at your class rank. And then when you get applied for scholarships, if your school does class rank, they will use that and make you the scholarship. All right. When I started talking about this ten years ago, all these ones right here, they all class ranked. Over ten years, these are all my friends, they won this thing. None of those guys use class rank again. They eliminated class rank. There's only probably five of us still holding out that still use class rank. And we're going to talk a little bit why that possibly is. All right, let me talk about two students so you get a kind of idea of why this is important to students. Student A is outstanding student, straight A student, taking all of our hard classes and plenty of our AP classes. And what I highlighted is this student also was very interested in band, choir, and fine arts. Ended up, on an average, what's turned this student on a four point one-nine GPA, pretty impressive, right? That student rates forty-one. We're repeating that. That student rates forty-one out of three hundred and twenty-seven students. Forty-one, forty-seven students. Class rank hurts the student. Ranking kids hurts the student here. So what does that happen? What does that person, that student have to do? They have to ask themselves, how important is class rank to them? And so how much are they going to challenge themselves? And will they take classes that maybe does not get the advantage of the class rank? They don't do it. That's what their parents are, are dripping their argument at home. And what would that do? Well, potentially, it could affect what college they go to or scholarships they may get, or might they get an honors program. This student also is usually very concerned about being the top ten percent of their class. So they spend a lot of time thinking about that. And all that, they're afraid of not getting into the school of their choice. Student B, so solid student, taking a lot of our honors courses, but also taking a variety of AP courses, took college prep, took the college prep in Spanish, and plenty of fine arts courses. Solid B average. Good student right here. Three point two-five GPA. Where's this student fall? Hundred and fifty-three out of three hundred and twenty-seven. Or repeat that. Hundred and fifty-three out of three hundred and fifty-seven where this student ranks. That student challenges herself. This is a college student taking rigorous courses, we talked about. All honors courses, AP courses, rigorous courses, they got Bs. So they challenged themselves. They also decided to take world language, Spanish, college prep, and fine arts, and got Bs there too. And for that, they're not in the top half of our class. Again, what are we concerned about? What is this person concerned about at home? Not in, they're worried about not getting to the college of their choice, worried about not getting an honors program if they apply to those honors programs in college. Because of the, because we did, we chose to do that exactly. Other examples, we've seen the negative impacts of kids. Our students, and some people have kids in this room right now who had these conversations at their table or remember these conversations, chose not to participate in unwated courses. They will not take a course that's not considered a weight. So they won't, they always take an AP, they won't take a band, they won't take a choir, they won't take a fine arts even though they love art, and they love band, and they love Second one, it's the point I just made. This is the one I worry about the most. They, these are the students that are in our counselor's office the most for anxiety. Either their anxiety about not being the top ten or top twenty-five. And even, there are lots of situations where if you had to refer these students for outside agencies, you know, their anxiety and depression that they have. And this is the question I ask you guys. And these are questions I've asked previous boards, and these are questions that I've asked my staff, is who are we and what are we about? Are we about ranking kids, sorting them out, or what are we about? Are we about our GPA or about growing as a kid? Are we about rigorous sports work? And are we fitting for rigorous sports work? Or is it the game of GPA? We had, this year alone, we added fourteen new electives in proportion to another. Not every one of those electives are going to be weighted GPA electives. Some of our kids may choose to take them or not take them based on their weight. We're having a real argument with my department chairs, however, Matt, the state, Ohio's doing away with ultra-two equivalencies, so there's going to be change in break from what we do. And so if you are a STEM major, and we have some new pathways for you to follow, will you choose not to follow those because you want to get into honors pre-pal, I mean, pathways because you want the GPA versus maybe taking some of the STEM pathways that are open to you? This year's graduating class, so listen to this. Their GPA ranges from a one point two to a four point five-six-four, pretty impressive. Mean, three point three-eight-nine. That's really impressive, me writing that all the way. There's fifty-seven of our students that have over a four point oh GPA. That's a credible number. And three point oh above, there's one hundred and seventy-five students that have over three point, three point oh or above. Over the years, this gives you the spread of our GPA. That's what you've seen just in the last four years, in the last few last. If you look at the spread, spread of time, when I first took over, two thousand nine, two thousand seven, took over as principal, two thousand nine, the average GPA of our early high school was a two point eight-eight. This graduating class is a three point three-seven. And how is that back? It's not the spread of grades, it's the rigor of the classes kids are taking. We, when I first started, we had seven AP courses on ninety-seven test taken. This year, we have twenty-seven AP courses, we have close to eight hundred test taken, and that doesn't count the number of CCP courses. Over half of our seniors will take their English, and some will take their science college course while in the early high school. And about third of our kids go to Kent State, will take a course at Kent State. So what's my recommendations for you? Here's my recommendations. I want to move away from class rank. And I'm going to move to a cum-lah system, a similar system you see in college. And here's the medal that we will present it. That's Hudson's medal. Hudson, when I proposed this to the RIS ten years ago, he actually did it. And that was the medal he curated. So we would assume cum-lah, not a cum-lah or a cum-lah system based on a GPA breakdown. We don't necessarily have the breakdown of where those would fall. We would award that medal at graduation, and you would wear it and cap it down at graduation. We, we will provide class rank. We still, we were not eliminating class rank. We are eliminating putting it on your transcript, and eliminating that it's there. We still provide class rank, which means if you need a class rank for a certain reason because you're applying to a scholarship that requires a class rank, you can ask us for that. I will write you a letter with your class rank in there. And a couple of changes I'd make. I'm going to, I would like to implement a cum-lah system with next year's graduating class. But I promised our students I will not eliminate a rule that they came into their early high school with. So the class in two thousand twenty-six was the first time we stopped publishing class rank. So if you're at our early high school, early in your early high school, we still will rank you, we'll still provide that rank for you. The freshman eighth graders incoming, we will no longer rank at that point. That's my recommendations to you. What will that involve too? If we made this decision, higher accepted rates at college, about ninety-three percent of our kids are accepted at the college, about eighty-four percent of them go, I call that the summer. I forgot to fill out the classroom forms. Higher accepted rates in honors and stellar program at colleges, we do have a great number of our kids that are in, by that, some veterans are here, but new kids in that, in those programs. So congratulations. More scholarships, last year's graduating class is a record, eight point five million dollars in scholarships. You can see scholarships actually increase because we would, I'll show you the idea on how we would check the box of the rank anymore. We would honor more students at graduation just from not the top twenty-five. We would probably honor almost a third of our class, maybe, with something. The focus on cum-lah means, cum-lah means with honors, super lars with high honors, and with high honors. And then what I find the most important is we will value what learning actually is about taking classes you're interested in and learning as much as possible and stop grade rolling, declining the correct class rank and stuff like that. What colleges look at? First thing we look at when we submit your transcript, we went, we reviewed all the colleges our kids go to, or probably about twenty of them. Then you look at GPA, difficulty of your curriculum, imperative of your high school, your ACT, SAT scores. They don't look at class rank until halfway down. Then they look at your essays, your recommendation letters, your interviews. You have to do a portfolio for art, or audition for music, or any extracurricular activities, or any of your employment history they may look at. We talked to some colleges. I picked some colleges that were unique, and I picked ones that we typically hear from. Boston College is interesting. They said that although it's helpful, there were better ways to choose a kid than class rank, and they find themselves doing away with using class rank at all because it's not worthwhile. Washington University St. Louis, we had a couple, we had a couple of kids in my time at Washington University. It's actually an awesome school, so if you're originally in a great school, that's a great Washington University St. Louis, we had a couple, we had a couple kids in my time at Washington University, it's actually an awesome school, so if you're interested in a great school, that's a great one. They said, the stress isn't worth class rank. And they said, most of their schools they work with do have class rank, can have a lower class rank. And then you'll recognize this one, Ohio University, a lot of our kids choose to go to Ohio University. And they say, your doing class rank will not affect their admission from the colleges. All right, so this is on our common app, which is most of our colleges take common app. You see the box here, about halfway down, it says, does your school rank? We simply would say no. And that would eliminate class rank from being looked at for our kids. It's all we would do. That's how easy it is for us to do that. It also gives you some idea of how common it is, they put check boxes in there, lets you know how common that is. Questions you guys have for me, my recommendation, including class rank?
Do there any colleges that actually want class rank?
No, we didn't talk to any colleges that have, still report a class rank. When I first looked at this 10 years ago, the answer was like, yes. We do not talk to any colleges that report a class rank, and those will not submit without some, a class rank.
You mentioned military colleges, they want class rank?
Yeah, they would report a class rank.
Currently, how, how does class rank impact our students' disabilities?
The rate just like everybody else. I'm not broken down, interesting question, I've not broken down the school awareness of where they call them class ranks. So, I can't give you a real great answer to that question after we've got data. My suspicion is, is that here as a principal, it probably doesn't benefit them, but it doesn't benefit any of our kids. How is that not, yeah, that's my prediction. But I've never broken it down by student disability where they're going to get a class rank.
Would the elimination of class rank change students' accessibility into honors programs? Not just getting into college, but then being able to get into an honors program, or get scholarship money?
None that we found, although it did hurt some of our kids getting into our program. Because once you check the box, then they look at that. I also will tell you that we're not eliminating our ability to class rank. We still have a class rank, it's in the computer. If somebody, they require a class rank, military, they might require it, an honors, we could, I would write a letter with their class rank. But honestly, guys, here's the truth. Class rank only helps your top of your class, it helps no more. There's very few rules I've ever made as a building principal that helped get our 326 kids. Does that make sense? Meaning, it's the one decision we can make as an organization to help the greatest majority of kids that we have. The only reason you class rank, it's the number one honor. It's the only reason you do it. It harms everyone else.
So, what Casey will do is, he will take the board policy, he'll craft what he would like it to be. I will bring it to the board for you to discuss, and at some point, I would, I'll make a recommendation. Unless I get the sense that you're completely opposed to it, but I don't have that sense, but we'll work through it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
So, we have come to that point in the meeting where we have our open forum. Although the public has the right to attend board meetings, it has no inherent right to participate in the deliberations of the board without its consent. Speakers may offer such objective criticism of the school operations and programs as concern them. But in public session, the board has the right to request that complaints about school personnel or about any person connected to the school system be directed to the appropriate administrator. The board asks anyone wishing to participate in open forum to please sign in the law so that we may have the ability to contact you later. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for our open forum tonight?
We really wanted to try out the new shot clock, but.
Oh, you know what, I jumped, I'm sorry.
That's right.
You're right, it was communications, my screen was scrolled up.
No, you're still good.
You know what, let's do communications, and I already gave the spiel, let's just.
No, we did the communications, that was, that's the case, you're right on where you're supposed to be. I was going to say, you were going to announce that we have a new shot clock, and the reason it happened.
I was going to do that afterwards, I was on it.
You want to talk about it?
Yes, I did. All right, so now that we know of what the expectations are. We did get a timer so that everyone can see the five-minute timer, so that no one has to verbally interrupt you, and you'll be able to see about where you are in that timing process. So, hopefully, it makes it a little easier for everyone, and hoping that that creates a more comfortable system.
But having nobody throw open forum to try it again next time?
Yeah. Yes, committee reports. Mr. Burrows, would you like to go first?
Because I'd like to be on the shot clock.
Can you share that after like 25 minutes, Mike?
I'll, I'll take all five of them. Mr. Brown, Dr. Clark, Madam President, School Board members. To those in attendance, I'm Jim Burrows. I'm the Nordonias representative to the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. I'm on the Board of Education for the Cuyahoga Career Center, and this is my March report. Something a little mundane compared to the previous reports, but something a little different. On Monday, March 14th, the Career Center's fire and EMS academy students participated in a training simulation, which was a culmination of all aspects of the fire service curriculum that the cadets have been learning since the beginning of the second grading period. They learned how to quickly put on all of their gear, hook up to a fire hydrant, hose nozzle applications, and proper emergency scene communications, search and rescue, and firefighter down rescues. This was the final phase of their fire training during the junior year. The fourth quarter will be an introduction to medical training in preparation for the EMT certification next year of their senior year. Captain Paul Templey is a member of the South Yucland Fire Department, and is a primary instructor at the Tri-C Fire Training Academy for the high school program. He graciously volunteered his time to come in to observe and offer tips of the trade to our students. Overall, the fire and EMS students did an excellent job, and continue to learn how important this training is to make them ready for a career in the fire and emergency medical service of the curriculum. Our next topic is, during the week of February 7th, the Career Center joined other career centers and technical schools across the nation to celebrate Skills USA Week. This annual celebration includes over 372,000 Skills USA members nationwide, and promotes career and technical education, abbreviated CTE. The week highlights the benefits of the Skills USA program, developing personal, workplace, and technical skills grounded in academics. It also provides schools with an opportunity to demonstrate how CTE helps prepare local students for college and high-wage, high-demand career fields. On Friday, February 11th, an assembly was held at the Career Center, highlighting all the students who participated in the Skill USA Leadership Conference this past fall, as well as the local competition leaders. We wanted to thank all the students who participated in this celebratory week. And finally, our next regular Board of Education meeting for the Career Center is this Thursday, March 24th, 6:30 PM, at the Career Center. And thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Go down, you have something tonight?
So, I do. In the attempt for us to partner with all of our groups here at Nordonia, Nordonia School District. One particular group I have had the privilege of working with is the NDEIC. The NDEIC is our Nordonia Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council. And in their attempt to ensure that all of our students are able to thrive academically and socially without the barriers presented by prejudice, and discrimination that have been hard at work for the last seven years, are really trying to be intentional about doing things that are inclusive of all students. And so, I start with praise to the schools and to the councils who have been responsible for our Unity Week. I think we can all agree that that has been an awesome undertaking, and I'd like to just take a moment and just give them an applause for a job they've done. Look together in our school district in a way, to be intentional about just identifying where our gaps are, but more importantly, trying to work hard to bring us together. And so, I wanted to commend them for that work. I also wanted to give kudos to both the high school and the middle school for their immediate and intentional response of getting some boots to the ground and working collaboratively to design our Nordonia High School and Middle School DEIC. So, I want to give them a round of applause. And the last thing that I want to mention, and it's kind of a prelude to something that you're going to be hearing much more about as the planning is just about underway. But I am extremely excited to announce that in partnership with our schools and the NDEIC District Initiatives Committee, they're going to have, we're going to have first, Disabilities Week in acknowledgement of our scholars, and awareness for our scholars who have disabilities, and having that sense of making sure that we are inclusive of all students. And so, I'm really excited about what that is going to formulate it to. And just wanted to openly say again, kudos to all the school, the administrators, the teachers, and staff that works on those groups, and the hard work done by the NDEIC Council. So, thank you very much.
I just wanted to report, we did have another Nordonia Schools Foundation meeting on March 8th. This meeting, we had a, our Nordonia Schools Family Support Specialist, Amy Gay, was there to talk about the different resources that are available, and different things that we do to help students and families every day. They also, another highlight of the meeting was that they gave a nice donation to our schools for something called DNA Day. You know all about it probably, but this is the first time I heard about it. It was, it is on April 22nd, and it's put together by, my understanding is, the biology teachers of Nordonia High School. Let's write that together. And so, I'm pretty excited, I'm hoping to be able to be able to attend that, and hear the guest speakers, and learn more about that. But they did give us a donation towards that, which was pretty cool. Again, there is an upcoming golf outing for the Nordonia Schools Foundation on June 11th, they're still planning that. And finally, our next meeting is going to be on April 13th, and that's all I have.
First thing I'd like to do is, Mrs. Chongzeng, I owe, and board owes your fifth, your fifth grade student council a huge round of thanks. There's their little support notes and thank yous, they were here, we've all had a chance to read them. And it's wonderful to see kids stepping out and trying to make an impact, and so, really grateful, thank you so much. For the legislative piece, there's a few things going on. So, in the House Finance Committee, it's held a second hearing on House Bill 597, and the Senate Finance Committee has had a first hearing on House Bill 597. Usually, you kind of see these running separately, but they're about the same thing. It's what this particular House bill would do, it would provide capital reappropriations including approximately $442.8 million for local school construction through the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission that received prior conditional approval. So, there had already been some prior approval there, and that's what they're working on. The Senate Local Government and Elections Committee has, they've heard sponsored testimony for House Bill 458, which would eliminate the August special election except, see, you know, like you can have like a May election, an August election, and November. It gets rid of the August special election, except in instances when the August special election is to nominate or elect candidates for the US House of Representatives, or if a school district is under fiscal emergency. So, they have to fall in that category, fiscal emergency, to be able to use that date. The bill would also allow a school district whose entire territory is located within the congressional district that is on the August ballot to put certain levies on the August ballot. So, that one is, it's like in its beginning, so just sponsored testimony, nothing else yet. Federal, the Federal Omnibus Appropriations Bill that was signed by President Biden for fiscal year '22, there are multiple layers to this, but it provides 1.5 trillion in funding. And the bill contains educational funding in the following amounts. So, for instance, it's adding, and mind you, at the federal level, this is going to go across the country. So, I mean, it's, you're talking billions in each of these categories. But discretionary appropriations for the Department of Education, for ESSA Title I grants, ESSA Title II grants, IDEAB, sometimes you hear us mention those, and which is also an increase, so it's going to be for $13.3 billion, which is an increase of $406 million above last year's level. So, there are significant pieces of money that are going into education. And also, money going into the CTE state grants, which are increasing by $45 million above the amounts from last year. So, it's, I mean, on a national level, we're seeing more money being pushed into education. And that's what I have to note.
Well, let's move into the superintendent's recommendations. I recommend you approve the consent items listed.
Can we get a motion? A motion. Second?
Several things here. First of all, you will be approving revised board policies and the new board policies, the public participation policy, which the board had a really great discussion about at the board's retreat. That will be in place, and to dispel, you know, myth or rumor, it does not restrict any kind of participation at the school board meetings other than it prevents people from getting able, being able to get up and speak more than one time. The timeframe's still the same and whatnot. Achievement testing policies, telehealth appointments, which will allow our kids to, with permission, visit their doctors via online at school, to keep them in school. You'll see a donation of $800, as Ms. Vodich said, about the, from the Nordonia Schools Foundation to High School DNA Day. DNA Day is, Nordonia is well-known across the nation for this. If you go to the YouTube and put in "Nordonia DNA Day", you'll see some teachers doing some fabulous singing of songs that they kind of, à la Weird Al Yankovic, it's all related to DNA, fun stuff. And it's a great day, you should get there if you can. You'll be approving some overnight field trips. Most of these already happened because our bowling team and wrestling team went down to state. But one of them is to come, and that's our softball team going to Myrtle Beach over spring break. And finally, you'll be approving the transportation impractical for two students.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
If she cares.
Item two is a recommendation to approve the revised job descriptions.
Can we get a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Last month, you approved the job description for our new central office position, the Director of Educational Services. And we thought it'd be a good time to revise the other central office job descriptions. They hadn't been revised since 2012. They didn't change very much, to be honest with you, but a few were tweaked, so that's what these are.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
If she cares.
Item three is a recommendation to approve the resolution to adopt the new revised board policy 8.07.
A motion, a second.
This one's unique in being here instead of the consent agenda, because it does have to have this resolution. What this policy does, currently, board policy has us go out for bid for purchases over $10,000. That is a well-under-the-law requirement of $50,000. We still, for purchases under $50,000, get multiple quotes, but we don't have to go through the formal bidding process. And with Mr. Brown coming in, realizing that we are one of the only places he'd ever heard of that still does that, we thought we would update it to be current of law.
Want to answer questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tidmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
If she cares.
Item four is a recommendation to approve the resolution for our grade three assessments for next school year.
A motion, a second.
This allows our third graders to use paper and pencil for the test instead of doing them online, and what we found is our students perform better when they're on paper and pencil. And the state allows us to do it for this grade online.
Any questions or comments?
I just, as, as an elementary teacher, it is, there's been research put into, when it was mandated, the discrepancies between online computer testing and then the actual, like, paper pencil tests, the younger.
The younger kids still do much better if they have the opportunity to use paper and pencil. So this will play to their strengths, um, and then, but they do have to go on the computer from fourth grade. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares.
Item five is a recommendation to approve the contracts with the People's Services Department.
Can I get a motion?
A motion.
A second?
And these are for, uh, one student, uh, who diagnosed with autism, uh, pretty significant, and this is a, um, a better way for us to go as far as providing student services he needs.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares.
Item six is a resolution, a resolution to approve the M O U with the Summit E S C A R P homeless consortium.
A motion.
A second.
We get a small grant every year to spend, uh, for the homeless population, and, um, under current law, if we do not spend all of the rent money, we lose it. And sometimes you find yourself buying things you don't need. Fortunately, this new law allows us to join a consortium with the E S C whereby unspent money carries over. So it's a, it's a much smarter way of doing things. Um, we'll be able to make the purchases without giving money back. And if we don't need to spend the money, we can bank it until next year.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares.
Item seven is a recommendation to approve the Medicaid addendum for the Summit Educational Service Center.
A motion.
A second.
And hopefully you saw my write-up about this in the board update. It, it all deals with the audit from the E S C that they would like us to do this, um, to help their future audits.
Questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares.
Item eight, recommendation to approve the resolution with the Office of Cooperative Purchasing.
Any questions? A motion?
I'll second.
Uh, this is another cost-saving measure the district takes. We belong to, uh, group purchasing, um, groups, so we can get better discounts on things that we need. So we had not been part of this one for a while because we're with the Ohio Schools Council, but this one has, uh, now, um, given us some offers that we want to join in again.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares.
And my final item, I recommend you approve the personnel items listed.
A motion. I'll second.
All right, just a, a few things of note here. First of all, the new position that you, uh, the job description you approved, Sean Smith, who's been our associate principal at the middle school for about ten years now, has been tapped to be our new Director of Educational Services. She will be relieving several of our central office administrators with some of their duties, and also, as we talked about, with Denise Ward retiring and with Deb Wallace retiring, she'll be doing our diversity work. She'll be doing our work with bullying, with health and wellness, um, all of those sorts of things. So we're excited about that, and Sean will be great in this position. We wish, Sean, Sean is here. Sean, congratulations, Sean. We're very excited to be here. My being is Brian's boss. We will post Sean's associate principal position tomorrow.
She's staying in the district.
She's staying in the district. It's outstanding, and she'll be the associate principal for the rest of the school year. And you'll see, Brian's wasn't another all-star. Abby Shoup is one of our Nordonia grads, middle school language arts teacher. Husband got a job in Michigan, and she decided to go with him. I tried to talk her out of it, but they've got on that. And then you'll see a lot of the traditional, um, kinds of things. I, I did want to point out one thing with curriculum, and that's the immersive virtual reality and math classroom training. I'm so excited about this pilot program that we're doing whereby Sean Phillips and sixty of his, um, algebra kids will be doing virtual reality algebra, where they'll be using the, uh,
Oculus.
the Oculus devices to manipulate, um, objects in three D to learn, um, algebra skills. And, uh, we are part of ten districts across the state piloting it. I'm really excited about it. Um, it is super cool. And then the rest of the stuff is, uh, the typical kinds of things you can see this time of year.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares.
And that concludes my report.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Item number one on my report is to approve the consent items, and I recommend for approval.
A motion, please?
A motion, please. I'll second.
I was mastered just in.
Yeah, who wants?
Amy? Um, so what we have in, in the consent items are the special board meeting minutes from February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, along with the regular board meeting minutes from February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, as long as the, uh, February twenty-twenty-two financial statements.
Do we have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares. Uh, item number two is a resolution to approve, uh, the school district use with the Huntington National Bank Commercial Credit Cards, and I recommend for approval.
Can I get a motion?
A motion.
I'll second.
And what's going on with these is when, uh, Huntington purchased First Merit, uh, the district had credit cards through First Merit, and so as a result of that, uh, acquisition, we have maintained the First Merit platform, which has, over time, become a little bit more archaic because they haven't really invested any resources into that. So, um, looking at their new platform through Huntington, the commercial credit card that they're offering to upgrade us into a more user-friendly, twenty-first century type of platform, um, we'll take care of that with this resolution.
Any questions?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares. And finally, uh, item number three is a resolution to approve adjustments to the appropriations for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. I recommend for approval.
Motion, please?
A motion?
I'll second. I'll second.
Uh, we have two appropriation adjustments here that I'm proposing. Uh, the first one is we got some additional funding through the S R funds, S R two and S R three A R P. And, uh, it's just under, uh, twenty thousand dollars, split between the two of those programs. And it was just an additional, uh, federal allocation that the state awarded across the state, and that was the amount allocated to us. So just appropriating that additional funding. And then the second item deals with our permanent improvement fund. And, um, you, you've seen in the past, I've come to you for some appropriation adjustments with our permanent improvement fund. Uh, this fund was created as a result of the M G M sum of money that we received. Um, due to the time of when we created that fund, we didn't quite know at all projects that we'd be taking on for this current school year. So working with Mr. Strickland and his department on ironing up summer, um, summer work with roofing at the middle school and other areas throughout the district, uh, increasing this appropriation measure will give us the spending authority to, uh, move forward with those projects. Obviously, it's important to note that we are using the permanent improvement fund to pay for this roofing project, whereas in the past, the general fund would have been responsible for paying for that cost. So what he's looking at is, um, Mr. Strickland's looking at is around three hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, middle school roofing project above the gym that needs to be, that's being shared.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.
Or she cares. And that concludes my report.
So that brings us to our adjournment. Um, our next, the next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Education will be on Monday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven P M. at Northfield Elementary School, um, right here. You can see that. Um, can I get a motion? Oh, yes, right, Thursday. Um, we have our community open forum at seven o'clock.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. I apologize. Right here. So we'll see. Hopefully, I'll get back here. On Thursday. Can I get a motion? I'll second.
Mr. Kearney? Mr. Larmour? Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Tedmore?
Yes.
Ms. Vodich?
Yes.